I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, for coming this evening for November eighteenth meetings. We'll get on to public comment first. We figure we get the presentations completed first. And online, we have Noah from Unistat. He's our bond person. Can you hear me okay, Noah? Can you hear me there? Noah? Noah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Noah, you have the presentation, I'm assuming, in front of you. Okay. Yeah, I'm having a problem with the audio in my PC, so I'm just got you kind of working on the speaker on the dais. Okay? All right, why don't you start, and then I'll see what we can do.
Okay, I have a camera on too, so I don't know if that's helpful.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess what would everybody say about the presentation?
Well, when you, I have the presentation up in the room, so you can go by the screen and just tell me next page, and I'll flip it.
Sure, okay, that works, that works here. All right, well, good evening, everyone.
You're here?
No.
Hello, I am the partner of Unistat. We are listed as municipal advisors or financial advisors. We, it's going to do with investments or anything like that. It's really just predominantly just debt management. We do approximately, I don't know, hundreds of transactions to you. We also have, we also have an office in Connecticut. From villages, towns, counties, by districts, libraries, all over, all over the state. But mostly, you know, in Dally and below New York, you know, I'm out. That's really the target for us. So, today the mayor asked me to come in and just kind of give a summary of what we've been doing so far, where we've been, and what's it gonna be like kind of going forward. And I like to think that we're more than halfway through this. The picture is getting, you know, clearer and better every day. And we've come a long way since, you know, since we first started. So, I guess I just wanted to start, maybe a little history of the borrowing. So that's what the first page represents. The deficit financing, so on page one or on the second page, but it's only about five slides here. Financing history slash timeline.
Yep.
The deficit financing was approved by the state in the spring/summer of two thousand and twenty-three for an amount not to exceed forty-five million dollars. And a term for a borrowing term not to exceed ten years. And this, these estimates were, you know, the forty-five million was based for, based on estimates at that time, basically just doing a cash flow. You know, adding up this, that was the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So basically, just taking the revenues, expected revenues, money in the bank, and again, the estimated expenses for the balance of the year, and that is the amount that was determined, the forty-five million. Again, it was based on, you know, as much information as we had at that time. So, what we needed to do is find a lender to help us or to basically lend that amount of money. So, there's a couple of things where we, we start off in what's known as bond anticipation notes. And just the second, just to talk about bonds and bands. Bond anticipation notes, or we call them bands. And versus bonds, the bonds are easy. It's like, it's a long-term loan. It's got a, it's a multi-year, looks like a home mortgage, or similar akin to a home mortgage. Whereas, you know, you take a loan for up to ten years, and it's fixed, and it's locked in for the, for the life of the, life of the loan. Bond anticipation notes are, is a one-year debt instrument. And so, they're issued for one year, at an interest rate. And they mature a year later. So they come due a year later. They can be renewed for up to five years. But each time you renew, there's a new interest rate attached to it, based on whatever the prevailing interest rate is at that time. In order to, there's a couple of rules that we had to abide by. In order to issue bonds, ordered financial statements needed to be up to date. So that is strike one. The deficit also had to be certified by the state, obviously the state control. And so, again, based on the limited information that we had at that time, we couldn't just sell bonds for four and a half million dollars. So, what you do is, and this is very common, I mean, I mean, there's, there's been deficit financing every few years in the state. And this is not unprecedented. You know, villages, towns, counties have been in this position before. And traditionally, we start off in bands. Just to get, because it gives us that flexibility. If we sold bonds right at the onset, you're locked in for ten years, and that's it. Whereas bands give you an opportunity to kind of do some things to maybe reduce that deficit. So regardless of whether or not we had up-to-date financial statements, and regardless of, you know, of all that, we probably would have started off in bond anticipation notes anyway. So that's what we did. So we sent that in order to pay. A request for proposals to various lenders. And, you know, we have, you know, all over the country. And, you know, because of our presence in the market, we're actually ranked number, top ten, number nine in the country last year in the amount of transactions that we've done. We have access to lenders all over. And there's a number, there are a number of lenders that we thought that we can go to. And it's a negotiation. We sent out, you know, the request for proposals. And I'll tell you, it was, it was difficult. There were some that I thought would be into this. In other words, be very interested in participating and to know about. And then basically, you know, and like I said, I mean, you can't blame them. The financials at the time, here it is in two thousand and twenty-three, and we had financials through two thousand and nineteen. And so, these banks and broker, broker dealers of the world are heavily regulated, and they have to answer to higher power as well. And unfortunately, you know, they have to justify how they're, how they feel comfortable lending money to a municipality that doesn't have up-to-date financials. And it's not just a year or two. You know, this was four years. So, we did find a firm, the name of the firm is Roosevelt and Frost. It's not exactly a household name, but in New York, they, they are very, very strong participant in the market. And in fact, they probably buy more municipal bonds than any other firm in the country. And so, they were interested. And the idea was to try to find someone, or find a lender that was willing to kind of come along with us for a multi-year, like a multi-year partner. Because as part of this process, we had to go through several due diligence calls. Basically, a credit check, you know, to cut it to the chase, or to keep it, to keep it simple. But it was, it was, you know, in excess, you know, several hours of calls and disclosure and explaining to the best we could the story of the, over the last several years, and what the plans are kind of going forward. In order for them to kind of fill their file, justify what they're doing. And again, they do enter into their, into regulators as well. So, we got them, we got them aboard. And there were just a couple, really, that were, that were interested in Roosevelt and Frost. You know, but no real firm commitment. The only real firm commitment that we got was from Roosevelt and Frost. So the first band, bond anticipation note, that was issued or sold, and when we say issued, sold, in effect, it means that Roosevelt and Frost is lending you the money, or lending the villagers the money. And so, in October of twenty-three, we sold, or they lent us, you know, four point four million for a year at an interest rate of seven percent. Next up. When the notes came due, the bands came due in October of twenty-four, the village made an interest payment of approximately three hundred nine thousand. You'll see this later on, as the numbers will be attached to this later on in the presentation. Approximately three hundred nine thousand of interest what was due, which is basically four point four million for a year at seven percent. And so, they were matured, they matured in October of twenty-four. Now, we knew, although we had made great strides, again, going back to that, that first slide about, you know, having up-to-date financials, we had gone through two thousand and twenty, we completed two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two financials, which was, which was really quite phenomenal. However, financials had to be up-to-date until two thousand and twenty-four, year ending twenty-four. So, we applied for the extension of the deficit legislation. The initial legislation was for eighteen months, and we asked for another six months through June of twenty-five to complete the financial statements, which we are on track, you know, to do. So, again, in October of twenty-four, we're ready to go to bonds yet. So, we had to renew the bands until June, because that's where the legislation is extended to. And so, it was, it was, bands can be issued for up to a year, but you can go, you know, shorter for a time. So they were renewed from October of twenty-four to June of twenty-five. So in fact, about eight months. And the interest rate had a little bit better. Interest rates did come down a little bit at that time. The story got better, Roosevelt and Frost got more comfortable. So it was a pretty good, it was a, you know, it was a, it was a pretty good rate at that time. All things considered, they did a little bit better by us. Also, as part of the story, the deficit financing was reduced to two point six million. So what we did is, we took the proceeds, the one point eight million that we recovered, predominantly through EFC, other grants, a little bit of tax increase. That put us in a better position, so we're able to pay down a portion of the deficit. So what we did is, we paid down a portion of the deficit and renewed two point six million until June of twenty-five, at an interest rate of six percent. And that interest expense is about a hundred and fourteen thousand. And that number will be later on. Is this clear so far? Everything good?
So far, so good.
Okay, good. And so, without bands, you can do interest, or bonds, for that matter. You can do interest only the first year, but by the second year, you have to start paying down a portion of the principal. So in addition to the interest payment that is going to be due in June, the village will also be making a principal payment in June of twenty-five. And this will be in the twenty-five, twenty-six year, in twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. So, right now, everything's an estimate. Everything that was certain is that we paid out three hundred nine thousand initially. And so that amount has already been included in the budget, and it's there. And, you know, anything additional will be, you know, incremental expense. But for the most part, in terms of deficit financing, the hard part is over. So we estimate, and you'll see how we get there later, but we estimate about two hundred and sixty thousand dollar principal payment will be made in June of twenty-five, in addition to the interest too. And at that point, the balance, assuming everything is good, the balance will be converted to bonds. It can go to the next one, going forward.
Okay.
And so my first slide is, you know, the first couple, the first slide is what, I guess we just put it said, we'll be converting the bands to bonds in June of twenty-five. Now, the bonds will be for a term of eight years. Because again, the maximum term that could be financed was always ten years. And we will have been in bands for two years. So that means now if we did bands for three years, then the bonds could be seven years. And so, the maximum term of the bonds will be in eight years. Now, that's assuming, you know, the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four audits are complete, we're up to speed, everything's good. At that time, you know, we're gonna look into applying for a rating on the village. The rating was withdrawn in August of twenty because of the lack of financial information. And so, they, you know, we will look into it and see, I mean, sometimes, depending on what, and I can get a decent indication from the rating agencies, and I'll have looked at the financial statements, and I can make a pretty decent estimate as to what kind of rating the village would get. And if the rating is not that great, it might not be helpful. Because the rating costs, it would cost you to pay the rating agencies to get the rating. And so if it's not a great rating, it might not be post-effective to pay for the rating. The better the rating, the lower the interest expense would be on the bonds. So, you know, it's, it's a simple analysis that we can do to figure out whether or not it's, you know, the rating would be probably approximately fifteen thousand or something like that. And, you know, however, it could save you half a point in interest rates more than, more than it could pay for itself. So anyway, we'll look into that. And then, you know, once these bonds are sold, the, you know, the state provides oversight for as long as the bonds are outstanding. So, you know, once they have been involved in, I mean, it's, it's a good, it's, it works out pretty well. Budgets are tight. Any, any municipality that's come out of this deficit financing has been in a, in a lot better place, you know, after that. You know, policies are put in place, planning, more planning is put in place, multi-year plans, approval plans. And all these things come with it over time, and that's the goal, that would be the goal for the village, you know, kind of going forward, to get to, just be in a better place and timely reporting. The village is going to be required to provide quarterly budgets to the, to the state. The annual budget will require state approval. And then any kind of future borrowings will also require state approval. So, it's a good amount of oversight. And, and again, it's, it's not necessarily a bad thing. So, the next slide, other numbers. And I know this might be a little bit difficult to follow, but I'll, I'll try to do the best I can, because I know there's a lot of numbers here on the page. But I want to start at the top line, working from left to right. It says that twenty-four, twenty-five was bigger than. The next column, estimated principal due, there was no principal paid in twenty-four, twenty-five. It's the interest rate, and that was the, the actual interest that was paid in two thousand and... So if you go all the way to the right, and that's what we're really focused on, is the total debt service. Total debt, total debt service is principal and interest payments. So that was the amount, three hundred and eight thousand and change net interest due, that was due in twenty-four, twenty-five. And it was paid, and it's already in the budget. And it was included in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and it'll be in the budget kind of going forward. Twenty-five, twenty-six is the next line. Again, left, left to right. See that estimated principal amount that I, I mentioned before? And this, but incidentally, is based on a two point six million dollar deficit. If it's reduced by any chance, then obviously, these numbers would be a little bit less. But this is, this is what we have as of right now. So, the estimated principal amount will be paid is two hundred and sixty thousand. That interest of a hundred and fourteen thousand, again, working from left to right, is, that's real, that's an actual number. And you see all the way to the right, you have total debt service of three hundred and seventy-four thousand approximately. That includes the principal. So, the incremental, if you're looking at it from budget to budget, and again, three hundred and, three hundred and eight is already in the budget. Three seventy-four is an estimate. So the incremental amount from budget to budget, from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, next year's budget that I, that I know that the village is starting to work on now, that begins March one of twenty-five, and incremental amount is about sixty-six thousand. Again, based on a two point six million dollar borrowing. So when I say the hard part is over, again, for the deficit financing, I'm strictly talking about that because three hundred and eight thousand is already in the budget, and now that incremental expense is about another sixty-six thousand. At such a point, in June of twenty-five, we're gonna be converting these bands to bonds. And, and the balance of this, of these numbers represents eight years. And I'm using a five and a half percent rate. I do think that the village is gonna do better. I, I do think that once the, the financials are up-to-date, and the picture is clearer, and we can be out there, and I'm not saying that it's gonna be, you know, in fine financial shape, but at least the financials are up-to-date, and that would give the lenders, the investors, a lot better feel. And, and I think there'll be more participants. I think there'll be more willing lenders, more willing investors. And I do believe that the interest rate will be better than what we've seen so far. And so at a five and a half percent rate, you see, if you look all the way to the right, that three hundred and seventy thousand and change, or in three seventy-two, three seventy-one, somewhere in that range, is gonna be the debt service going forward. So what's the amount, if you make a principal payment, twenty-five, twenty-six? Once that amount is put in, is in the budget, that should, it shouldn't have any incremental impact going forward from there. So, the bonds will be an eight-year, it'll be an eight-year bond. And, and it'll be locked in until two thousand and thirty-three. And the estimated debt service, again, is approximately three hundred and seventy, seventy-five thousand or so. And that's basically all I have.
Thank you, Noah. Any questions down in the audience?
I also have a question.
Yep, one quick question here.
So, the estimated principal payments seem to escalate as it goes, right? In the fifteen, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand increments. So, the interest is on the outstanding balance, right? Would it be prudent or possible to lift those and pay bigger principal earlier? So that the interest on the bonds is less?
Sure, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, to the extent that, look, I mean, this is based on two point six million. You know, to the extent that the village has the funds, or is, is able to make a bigger principal payment, it can reduce, it would probably just reduce, use to reduce the size of borrowing. So in other words, instead of borrowing two point six or two point three four, at that point, two million, three forty, I mean, maybe it could, it can reduce the borrowing kind of going forward. You know, the village is gonna have to kind of look, you know, fortunately, the village was in a position in which it didn't have any money. And that's what obviously causes deficit financing. You know, it's in, it's in the village's best interest to also have cash and have fund balance. So, it's that, it's a decision to be made. And I can, I know, I mean, it's, it's difficult to look to see, you know, interest expense, or, you know, any, any kind of, on any borrowing. But by the same token, the village needs to have, to maintain some level of fund balance. So that, you know, just for kind of, you know, rainy day expenses, or, you know, a quick storm, or a leaky roof, or something that you have to come up with capital, or, you know, a capital expense that you just don't want to have to go and borrow for.
That's why I said possible, right? Obviously, it would have to be a possibility, I'm just saying, from the consideration. Because any, any of us who owns a mortgage, anyone who owns a mortgage, you pay the principal, you accelerate the principal payments, and you save interest on the life of the mortgage, so.
Yeah, but Noah, was there anything with this of paying it off faster? I thought we couldn't do that.
Yeah, well, we're, we will also, I mean, well, again, if we, if we have the funds to do it, I mean, it's, it's a consideration. You know, prior to, one of the things that we will do is, is, we will look into that possibility of having a prepayment option. Now, the prepayment option probably will be, it's, it's not like our home mortgage, when we can refinance at any time. Generally speaking, and you gotta think about this from an investor's perspective. The investor wants to, they're gonna lend you the money, and that's in effect what they're doing. When they, when they're, when they lend you the money, they're buying bonds. It's the same thing. It's, it's the same exact meaning. And so, they want to know that their investment is gonna be locked in for a short period of time. So I can see them saying, okay, we'll let you have a prepayment option, but it won't be for five years. Or it won't be for six years. And so, if you want to do this, you know, you're locked in, you know, I mean, you're locked in for the next five years. And now, for that prepayment option, they might require, or they might ask for a little bit of a higher interest rate. So in other words, instead of a five and a half percent with no prepayment option, they might say, well, you know, we'll let you pay over five years, but we, in the meantime, we want five seventy-five, five eighty-five. You know, and like a little bit of a penalty, if you will. You know, so, you know, it's tough, it's tough to say today, November eighteenth, you know, we, we'll, we'll have a lot better idea about financial position probably within the next, I would say, within the next, you know, four months or so. You know, the spring, or March, beginning of twenty-four, twenty-five year, I'm sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six year. And, you know, we'll have, you know, we can have that discussion and see where we are. You know, with this, in this case, or, you know, the theory of bonds, or the theory of lending, you know, I'm, I'm the same way on a personal level. I don't want any debt. But when it comes to, because we all have our own kind of time horizon, unfortunately. The village has been around a long time, and presumably, it's gonna, what is it, established? Incorporated eighteen ninety-five, is that right? I mean, so, you know, it's, it's been around for a hundred and thirty years. I mean, presumably, it's gonna be around for another hundred and thirty years. So I mean, these, you know, when you finance capital, or you finance projects, or you finance certain things, it's spread out, you know, over the, over the course of time. So that people moving in and out of the village can kind of share along with that cost. And again, I think it's, I think it's gonna be important for the, for the village to start to accumulate some sequence of fund balance. You know, you have a general fund, it's three six million dollars. I mean, what would, what would be appropriate, I mean, you know, a million dollars of fund balance? If you got a ways to go there. So, um, that's a little bit of a balance. Is there a hybrid approach? I mean, these are all things that we'll have a, you know, conversation about over the next several months. Whether we take a little bit and pay it down before we convert the bonds, or we just take some and just, and, and put it, and try to build up that fund balance, so we don't get anywhere near this position yet.
Thanks, Noah. Anybody else? All right, anything from the board? All right, Noah, um, thank you very much for your presentation, your time, uh, and I guess we'll, we'll see you tomorrow in conference call.
Yes, yeah, I would love to, you know, more than happy to do this again.
Great. Thanks again. Have, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Any question?
Uh, yes, now that he's on the phone, uh, this cross outfit was under suspicion with SEC in twenty-twenty, and they had to pay out a lot of money to the SEC, and they're under the investigation of the SEC still. So why is he not disclosing to us what is going on? Did he not do his financial research, Noah?
Would've been a good question to have on the phone.
Well, I didn't want to millerate him, I'm, I'm.
No, I mean, he could probably have an answer for you, I mean.
He's a poor advisor, if he didn't disclose that to you. Disclosure is the whole key on everything.
What year was it, huh?
Twenty-twenty.
What's the law on twenty-twenty? And you said it was with the SEC?
SEC Securities and Exchange Commission.
Yep.
In charge of, of something.
And there's two different sections. They're talking about section seventeen A and section fifteen D of the Securities and Exchange Law. It's from back from nineteen fifty-three and something else. They've been in business for two-hundred years, and that's the first time that they've, they've been there.
Okay.
They've been around two-hundred years.
You said it's the first time they've been hit in two-hundred years?
Yeah.
I mean, as somebody who used to deal with the SEC and FINRA in my previous job. Two, two-hundred years and only one charge from the SEC or FINRA, that's, that's a miracle. That's, that's a good track record.
In other times, it isn't.
We'll find out in the, the, you know, we find out.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on, uh, our treasurer Leslie will now give an fifth and update on our budget process so far. And, um, again, as mentioned, we'll be, we're, we're starting to meet with department managers and so forth to develop the budgets. So that process is starting. Take it away, Leslie.
Um, so this slide is just focusing on the general fund, the revenues, um, showing the adopted budget. The actuals through October thirty-first, and then the difference between actual and the budget, and then the percentage collected through October thirty-first. So, uh, the first line is the property taxes. The adopted budget is four-million-six-ninety-two. Actual through October thirty-first collected, four-million-four-seventy-nine, leaving a variance above collective of two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. Um, this amount was remitted to the county, uh, last week. Um, so we will be made whole, uh, by the county, uh, usually about February, March timeframe. They will give us the remaining uncollected taxes. Uh, the second line is sales tax. Adopted budget, one-point-one-million, one-million-one-hundred-sixty thousand. Actual through October thirty-first, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, having a variance of two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. Um, the actual is, represents three-quarters, so there is one more quarter to be collected. And based on the, um, projections, it's probably gonna be slightly over, uh, what we budgeted by about twenty-thousand dollars. The next line is the fines and forfeitures, which is the justice court. Uh, adopted budget was ninety thousand. The actual is, uh, through September, fifty-one-thousand-seven-fifty-one, leaving a variance of thirty-eight thousand. We've collected fifty-eight percent. Um, and again, based on the trend through September, we are looking to hit the adopted budget of ninety thousand. Uh, the next line is the franchise fee. Budgeted a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. Actual came in at a hundred-and-six, having a slight variance of fourteen thousand, so we've collected eighty-nine percent. Uh, the next line is the SRO of the school district. The, uh, adopted budget was two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. The actual through September, uh, we've collected a hundred-and-forty-six thousand. This is just five months during when the schools open, leaving a variance of a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. So fifty-five percent has been collected, and again, based on the trends of what we've filled out and we received, um, this line will be slightly over the adopted budget of the two-sixty-eight. And then the last area is the building department. Budgeted seventy-five thousand, actual came in at forty-seven, leaving a variance of twenty-seven thousand. Collected about sixty-three percent. Um, again, forecasting up the rest of the year, we're gonna be slightly under, depending on the permitting that comes in, um, to hit the budget of seventy-five thousand. Next slide is the general fund expenditures. Um, I grouped it by function. So first section, the general support. This represents village hall, um, all admin staff. Um, the adopted budget was nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. Actual through October, five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, leaving a variance of three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. So we've spent sixty-four percent of the budget. Uh, public safety, that's the police and the building department. Adopted budget, two-million-four-seventy-one. Actual, one-million-five-eighty-eight, having a variance of eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. Spent approximately sixty-five percent of the budget. Transportation, it's DPW, budgeted at nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Actual through October, five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, leaving a variance of four-hundred-and-three, and spent about sixty percent of the budget. Culture and Recreation, other parks. Adopted budget is seventy-thousand-nine-hundred. Actual came in at sixty-nine, leaving a variance of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-one. So we've spent ninety-nine percent of that budget. Community, um, it's mostly beautification around the village. We budgeted thirty-four-thousand-five-hundred. Actual is nineteen-thousand-seventy-four dollars, having a variance of fifteen-thousand-four-twenty-six. So we spent about fifty-six percent of the budget. And then last is the employee benefits. And this includes debt service as well, so I must, uh, uh, the title. Um, adopted budget is one-million-eight-forty-six. Actual is a million-ninety-nine, having a variance of seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. We spent sixty percent of the budget. This is just some highlights, uh, don't mind if I talk a lot of this. Um, so to date, we've completed the February twenty-twenty, February twenty, twenty-twenty-three audit. Um, on that report, the total accumulated deficit across all funds was one-point-five million. Uh, the external auditors are currently working on the fiscal year-end, um, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Um, that should hopefully be done in the next month or so. Um, and then the projected accumulated deficit for that year-end, that fiscal year-end is a million-four-thirty-nine. Um, the external auditors, uh, BSD, they have started to put together the information for the February twenty, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Um, they started working, they should hopefully be done in the next couple of weeks. And then the New York State Annual Fiscal Reports, the AFRs, they have all been submitted through February twenty, twenty-twenty-three. This is just the stuff that the mayor, myself, and the board, we've started the budget process for next fiscal year. Um, we've met with the department heads, uh, a few times, um, and then we're going over their suggestions for the upcoming budget for next year.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Uh, anyone have any questions for Leslie?
Hey, Pauline, can we, can we get any numbers on water and sewer? You know, how much have we spent for meters? How much have we collected in water? How much have we, you know, anything? Those were all good numbers, but I didn't see anything on water and sewer.
I can do, I can do another presentation.
Okay.
Next meeting or the meeting after, I can get that together for you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Penny?
In line, I'm from the front court. The public safety numbers, does that encompass the, who's the problem without a contract? Does that account for that?
That's.
Deficit, that, that's gonna happen eventually whenever that contract is settled?
That's not in that number yet.
Okay.
So that'll be.
Do you have a headcount?
Michael?
I don't understand all these charts and stuff, totally. I'd like, uh, Mike, I see on three large sheet. Um, property taxes, so that's, I'm coming in, right? So people aren't paying their taxes, so they're gonna get that reimbursed from the county or something?
Correct. We send a report of all the unpaid, and they make us whole, and then they re-levee it on their taxes.
Okay. So, so, so far, it says actual, it says percent of the actual over budget. So what is ninety-six percent mean in that situation?
So we've collected ninety-six percent of the levy.
Okay, so, and the remaining four percent is paid by the county?
Correct.
All right. And then what about the expenditures? Like, for example, um, well, let's, let's just take transportation. So we had budgeted a million, basically a million dollars for that, and we've spent five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand.
Correct.
And is that till the year end, is that till December thirty-first?
That's just through October.
Through October.
October the very first.
Okay, so we have a surplus then of four-hundred thousand?
Well, we have, we have till the end of February, you know, there's gonna be more spending.
The rest of the year.
The rest of the fiscal year is spent, yeah. Today, we've spent sixty percent through October.
I think the title is wrong. It shouldn't really say over budget.
Yes.
I think that's, I think that's what the issue is. So on expenditures, we have spent sixty-four percent of the nine-hundred-and-forty-one today.
Correct.
That's not where we're going. And when you go to the revenues, um, property taxes, we have collected ninety-six percent of the budget of four-point-six million.
So if you, um, so we're expecting to stick to the budget exactly? In other words, we're not gonna go, you know, we're not gonna have more expenditures than what we budgeted for? We're not gonna have more revenue than what we projected, is that correct?
Well, I actually mentioned like sales tax, where we budgeted the one-million-one-sixty. And again, like when you do the budget, it's estimates based on, you know, data we had.
Sure.
So we had collected three-quarters already, the eight-eighty-seven. So we have one more quarter to be collected, which, based on the three-quarters that we got, is most likely gonna be higher than this two-seventy-two, so that we're gonna collect more than what we budgeted. So we budgeted conservatively, so that's just gonna be excess revenue. And staying with the expenses, like the public safety through October thirty-first, they spent the one-point-five million. I mean, we plan not to go over budget. I mean, it could happen. We monitor the budget pretty closely, but, um, we're hoping to be under budget slightly. I mean, I can't make.
Yeah, we took a, we took a picture right now of the situation, right? To date. So you've got income and you've got expenditures. Where are we there? Are we right today? Are we at zero? Or are we minus thirty percent? In other words, have we had more revenue than expenditures through today? That's my question.
I mean, it's hard to predict what's gonna happen the remaining of the year with the expenses. I mean, like salaries are fixed, the health insurance is fixed. I mean, we don't think anything is gonna come across that's gonna be not budgeted for. I don't think we're gonna re- even, yeah, it's like, it's dependent on the winter, I don't know.
But I'm just saying, as of today, we're all be on the budget. Are we?
From the on-budget rule, so.
I would say, I would say we're on budget, on budget. Because some of the revenues are, are slightly over.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, some are over.
We're not projecting the expenses to be over budget, so I would say we are on target to our adopted budget for some work to be done.
Short hanging for Balfour Drive. Does the sale of the water that the village is selling, is that shown in this budget at all?
That's not part, that would be part of the, the water sewer. So I can discuss that after, when I do my presentation for that.
Isn't that part of the village budget, though?
That, this is just general fund. Like, that would be in the water sewer.
Right, I thought we were getting a presentation on.
Yeah, the whole.
I'm just presenting, I just presented that openly.
But you don't even do the budget on the water and sewer?
We do, but I wouldn't, I wasn't, I wasn't here tonight to present on the water sewer. So I can present on that at a future date.
All right.
Did we, did we set a date for that? But you don't, excuse me, not to interrupt, but you don't have any, any numbers at all in your head about what we've spent?
I don't have the water sewer.
Okay, all right.
But I can, I'll have that for you. Fairly.
Go to Leslie's water room, and we'll let you know.
Tom, I think this is a weird question for you. Um, so it shows here on the debt and service projections, right? Um, from the previous.
Yeah.
Um, they're showing, you know, how much money, how much principal it's due each year through twenty, thirty-three, thirty-four, right? So we're making those principal payments each year. Um, does the tax is figured out right now? Or are we assuming a five-percent tax increase for the next eight years? Or?
Well, like he said, that number is being flexible. Lower at the end of the day.
Right, but I'm saying, if it was just like this, the way it is today, what are the principal payments that we do? Do you anticipate having to increase taxes each year to be able to meet these expenditures?
What we did last year is we raised taxes twenty-one and three-quarters, something to that effect. What we ended up telling you was ten or eleven percent or twelve percent was the actual tax increase. That remaining amount was for money collected to pay off the debt. So we're trying to break it up if we can even, put it on the tax bill separately, so you'll know what the tax increase is, just normal budget stuff, and then another line for the debt. So you know what we have for the next eight years. And you can see it, if you took that number and, and we end up dividing it, um, it'll come up with what every household is gonna be responsible for.
Considering this is, the, the final debt service is fairly assisted from next evening, we should expect the tax increase for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. And then not an increase for the next eight years, based on this, because we're gonna increase it to cover that payment each year. I mean, it's not, it's not going up five percent of the year.
Right, that, that, if that number works out to be stagnant at X percent, then that's what it stays at.
And then hopefully in twenty, thirty, what, this year, it'll go down.
Hopefully it goes away.
Well, I mean, our, I mean, our total tax, that's our total tax.
I mean, trying to take it as, as two pieces here, right? We got, we got the debt, and then we just have budget. So that's what we're trying to maintain. And I remember last year, our budget before we, we went to, you know, made some really, really deep cuts on this stuff, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-eight percent. So, you know, getting it down to where we were, you know, and we got a payment, so. And we get it, we understand where we are. You know, we all live here, we got the same issues, so we're, uh, we'll definitely, uh, you know, make the presentation on the water and sewer at the next meeting. We can get that in, and then, uh, because we're busy as heck trying to get the budgets done, so we can get our, get that through. Couple of weeks of December, get it finalized, and then we'll. Couple of weeks of December, get it finalized, and then we'll have our public hearing beginning of January. We'll get that stuff up to state. Okay, anything else?
Short hanging four, Balfour Drive. This is about comments on the agenda?
Yeah, we're going there next.
Okay, once you announce it.
Okay, why don't you go?
Short hanging four, Balfour. Two things, one is, um, Weatherbain, I should've stated Brookshire, they're the ones with the outside spigots.
Weatherbain has them too.
I never noticed them at Weatherbain. But they are at Brookshire, and there's no, they, they did put locks on them a few years ago, what locks are gone? I don't know if they're using them, I have seen them used over the summer, but not lately.
We can check with the property manager, people there, and touch base with their lead.
Yeah, one of the other things is...
President.
The electric down at the pickleball court. There's an old outlet on a four-by-four post sticking up out of the ground. It's all just mantles and, I don't know what happened, cause I have a picture if you wanna see it. Is all the electric done down there? Is that live?
That's not live. There was a barrel over the top of it.
Correct, there was a barrel.
You're talking the right side?
Yeah, why would they leave it there like that?
Will we get it out of there? It's dead. It used to be the power for the scoreboard.
Scoreboard, right.
Right, so we'll remove it. We'll get it out of there. I saw it the other day.
Yeah, I went by it, I don't know if it's alive or not.
Most of it, all the lighting that was done, well, the electrical work was specifically for the poles and the lights. And I think they, um, there's still a light that we need, need to double-check it. A security light, once the main lights go out, and then a light for the nerve conflag.
Right. I was worried about that being alive or something.
Yeah, it's, um, I'm just making a note of that.
I guess I do have one more.
Fair bet.
Not bad.
What happened to the roof at the, uh, water treatment plant that the price was going more than double?
Okay, so we'll get to that first. So what happened is, the company that was hired to remove the roof, when they, when they stripped it, found lots of issues with the parapet, which is the wall that extends to the roof, right? So when, when we saw that, they brought it to our attention, called the engineer, we met down there. Price came back high, obviously. So what we ended up doing is we reached out to Precision, and the gentleman behind you is from Precision Roofing. Uh, we reached and contacted both of them to give us a complete bid on the parapet work and the work to finish the roof. And these are the prices that were coming back. We're still working on some of the other contractual concerns of the warranty. We did have a question on prevailing wage, but that went out the window. So we're looking at two courts right now, they're close. Jimmy was recommending the, uh, the company of ABC. Uh, since Mark is here, we can ask a question at the end of the day if you don't mind. But, you know, the question was, I guess, from the board's perspective, because it is a little bit cheaper than the ABC quote. But you guys, in your quote, are gonna be basically putting two layers of two-by-sixes around the perimeter of the building. And there was some question as to why that versus doing the block, replacing the block that needs to be replaced as well.
A lot of places take the parapets down if there's nobody walking around, if there's no need for a parapet.
But you need it for the height, so you get the drainage. It's a flat roof, so either you're gonna be pitched this way, or you're gonna be pitched this way, towards the center of the roof. But I'm not a roofing guy. This is what I've been seeing, hearing, and I'll let Mark explain it.
Sure. My name's Mark, I'm from Precision Roofing. I grew up in the area, I'm still living in it. Um, I've worked for the roofing company for twenty-five years. What we're seeing now, as opposed to the original drawings that came out from it, is it's a four concrete deck on top of it. And, uh, I met Tom over there the other night, I clinked him, the original engineer, I believe his name is Mr. Farr, had some repair work on four or five feet of the bond beam, which is basically a concrete beam that goes around the perimeter to support it. So you have gutters on the front and back. I mean, what Tom said, he hasn't seen water coming out of that front meter in years. Um, so we were gonna put tapered insulation on it, going to front and back. You would need the extra two-by-sixes on the side to keep the water from spilling that way. You want it all to go in controlled directions. So it would be tapered insulation that we would be putting, that we provided. It's about thirty-six feet, so, um, the panels come in eighth inch, quarter inch taper. So in half of that distance, eighteen feet, you'd be about five inches higher than you would be at your gutter edge. So we're trying to make sure that the water goes in a very definite direction, not Tom's up there, or, cause you've had tremendous damage to that building outside. That split face block is nice, looks good, but it absorbs water very easily. So we wanna make sure the water gets off in time and manner. One of the things, I believe we gave the two options in terms of the warranty, which is a twenty-year and a thirty-year from the manufacturer. And the way they refer about it is a no dollar limit warranty on labor and material. In order to give those warranties, you have to be licensed by the manufacturer. We're probably licensed by fifteen different roofing manufacturers, Firestone, Carlisle, John Mansville, and most big names in the business will license it. You have to follow prescribed manner. It has to be inspected after it. And I would caution you on taking a material-only warranty. It's about ninety-five percent of the problems that any roof will have will be more workmanship-related than they were material-related.
Right.
So when you, and with Firestone, we have like one point five million square feet under warranty with them. They basically, we pay them a warranty fee when we do it, as part of our cost. And for the next twenty years or thirty years, if you take that option, um, you don't have any worries as a town owner.
Right.
You would call up, you'd be given a way, one eight-hundred number. And as long as Precision is in good graces with the manufacturer, they will send us a fee of a thousand bucks, or whatever it might be, to go out and repair it. If we find something extensive, like they had a big wing bow off or something like that, then we come up with a different solution. But basically, for any repair for the next twenty or thirty years, the manufacturer will cover.
And that could either be your labor, or if you guys retire and go down south, then, you know, the company will do your...
They would put the next licensed, um, roofer for Firestone, that will be proposed. And I'm not sure that the roofing company, cause I looked before I came here tonight, is actually licensed. They might be able to give material warranties, but not the no-dollar limit warranty.
Yeah, these are some of the questions that we were discussing, um, you know, on and off today. I was on the phone with our engineer. But we're gonna, we're gonna table this for tonight, this, this subject, and we're gonna, we need to do some more homework, and then come, come back, expedite. Because this is, this is an emergency, right? We peeled back the onion, we got down to this is the first layer, and this is what we're dealing with. So we're gonna have to, you know, have to expedite this quickly to get something on that roof.
I know we sent you a bunch of attachments. I could also send you a sample warranty, and, uh, you know, a few other details regarding that.
Okay.
But the thing to think about really is the, the no-dollar limit, the guarantees, the town's not gonna have any additional expense moving forward on what you choose for twenty or thirty. There's different detailing that's involved.
Right.
Um, between the twenty and thirty-year warranties. But for the most part, what you choose will give you a roof in conformance with their specifications.
Okay. And what's your opinion of the block, if you're concerned?
Of the block?
Yeah.
Certainly it needs to be repaired. There's several approaches to it. It is just concrete. Now, if the engineer feels that bond beam was completely compromised, the face has split off of it, just like it has on the back corner of the building, where that last three or four feet of the brick has deteriorated from freeze-thaw cycles.
Right.
Um, that's what's happened to the bond beam up top. And yes, that's another reason why we don't want water to spill off on that side of it. We want it to go definitely to the gutter.
Okay. Any other questions from you want to ask? Okay. All right, appreciate your being here and answering those, uh, couple of questions. But again, we're, we're, we're gonna table it, and we'll, uh, we'll be in contact if Mark, we have any other questions.
That would be great.
Okay.
I certainly appreciate the time to talk.
Yeah, my pleasure.
With that substantial increase, are we required to go out and bid again?
Well, considering...
So like the scope of work has changed?
Well, we, yes, it did, and we went back out to the companies that put in the original bid, as we felt was probably the most expeditious way to get, um, um, performance or get the estimate on it.
Precision put in the bid?
Yes. Yes, yes, it did. We had, actually, I believe it was three. The last, the, one company did not respond to our timetable. They got there within twenty-four hours to give us the estimate on the work. And considering now it would be considered emergency, you know, that opens up other doors to get us through whatever we need to, to get it repaired. But we felt, but we felt that we needed to, that was the reason we went back to the well again, to see what that cost was gonna be.
What was the difference between ABC's bid and Precision's?
Five grand.
Up or down?
I'm sorry?
Up or down? Five grand up or down?
Um, ABC was slightly higher.
And where's ABC from? Cause when you look them up, it's very local.
Jersey, they're Jersey. North Bergen.
So we went with the higher bid, that's not even local?
Well, because it was recommended to go with the block versus the wood.
By who, ABC?
Nobody, engineer. That was their proposal, to put in block, yes. And their proposal is, is wood framing around the top.
They use the wood all over the place, even in brand-new buildings.
Whatever they do, I'm, I, you know, when...
Using pressure treated, it's every year.
When you don't have a PE or, you know, have that expertise and haven't been in the business for twenty-some-odd years, you know, uh, it's not my fault. You know, we look at the contract to see its contents, we pass it by the attorneys, we pass it by the engineers, and we, and then we compare prices. And we look at references, and we do those types of things. And those were the top two that, uh, that came up. And remember, we went out to bid twice before that, and never got a response. So, you know, it's either, it's either everybody's super-duper busy...
So maybe now it's a substantial amount of money, we go out to bid, you might get more bids, cause they might look at it...
We don't have that time, maybe that roof has been, the roof has been ripped.
We waited all year already, you know.
But the roof is ripped. And if we knew, if we had the extra vision to know we had a problem before, these guys would've told us. The ABC would've told us, AR would've told us, and you'd have the complete package right out of the box. But, you know, do your own roof without that getting into an attic space, and you open it up and it's soft and all your plywood's wet. Well, what's the recommendation? We replace all the plywood. So, you know, we get it, twenty-twenty is a, you know, retrospect, but we think we, we, going through this process, we were doing the right thing. And, you know, we went to bid, we did all those things that we need to do. All right? Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
The settlement for the former village employee.
Uh-huh.
What, what title was that?
What, what?
What title was that village employee?
What title?
It's... The resolution has everything it needs to have.
Yeah.
While I'm asking my, my question.
I'm not gonna comment on it beyond what's in the resolution. Ninety-five support to do the same.
Sorry?
Ninety-five support to do the same.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna make the assumption that this is the building's stuff.
You can assume.
All right? And it sounds like we're, we're paying half our money to a village employee that was suspended without pay. Is he still, my question to you is, the village building inspector still considered an employee, whether he's on the suspension or not?
Again, I'd advise the board not to answer.
You can't answer me that if the village, the village building inspector that's been under suspension, is he still a village employee?
I'm advising them not to respond to that.
Well, save to assume that it's him. And now we're paying out more money, are we gonna have a dollar amount in the resolution?
There is a dollar in the resolution.
Any other questions?
So, are we still selling water with the... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's not.
I mean, is, are we still selling water when you're sending out things in the mail? Cut back, don't do this, don't do that?
Yeah. Everything, tonight we're doing a resolution to basically make the water restriction voluntary, and all commercial home and indoor systems suspended until further notice. Paul, same question?
Yeah, I, the question I have is on the, um, update regarding the water and sewer billing and meter exchanges. And you're not gonna be able to answer the question that I had, was how, uh, let me see, how can, how can I say this? How many Badger meters have we purchased? And we don't have to, I don't have to know the number, cause you're not gonna know the number. But how mu, how many Badger meters have we purchased, the new cellular ones?
We have installed to date fifty-two.
And how much do the meters cost?
It depends on the size of the meter and I don't have...
The household, for my house, single-family house.
I don't have that information in front of me, Paul. And I don't wanna give you inaccurate...
Okay, so we installed fifty-two, how many have we purchased?
I believe it is seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Okay, a, a couple of things, a couple of things that I just wanna point out. Two people actually called me up and just asked me, you know, what do you know about the meters? And I, I explained to them what I knew about the meters, the meter exchange. And I was on-site when the DPW guys came in and, and asked, uh, the owner if they could change out the meter. And they, nice guys, two nice guys, they got with a beard, and the other guy, really, really nice guys. They explained the whole thing, you know, you can call on the phone, you, pop, 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 and it's not gonna cost you anything to have it installed. Okay, you know, they installed the meter. And the same two people, the residents that I talked to, they said they had called here, they talked to somebody in the office, and there's no charge to have the meter installed.
That was me that spoke to them.
Okay. But that's not really true, because we, we're paying for the meters, somewhere along the line. I mean, that, that homeowner that's getting the upgrade is not paying then and there, but we're paying for those meters. And, and Tom, you go back, we go back to two thousand and sixteen, when you and I sat there, and, and this, you had, this is a great idea. It was a great idea then, it was a, it's a great idea now, to have these meters, we don't have to go around and read them, they're more reliable.
Right.
But the point, the problem then was, it was a lot of money, it was like over a million dollars.
Yeah, it was like one point five, one point four. But that was a big thing, big...
Well, we, we've had, we've had, we've had conversations, and nobody ever said it was a bad idea, it's just that it was an expensive idea and money that we didn't have.
Right, but...
All right, now, now, let me finish please. Now, now we're talking, and going forward here, uh, future borrowings for capital projects will require New York State approval, so this is what Noah was telling us. So this is over a million dollars, it's, I would say it's a capital project. We're not, maybe not borrowing money, cause I don't know where we're getting the money. We, we, we've authorized the purchases not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars. Now, we bought seventy-three meters.
What are you reading, I'm sorry?
That was your resolution, twenty-four dash zero-zero-four-one on May twenty-sixth.
For the purchase of meters?
Authorized the purchase, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Badger Cellular Pro Program and the meters,
Right.
at a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. We bought seventy-three meters.
Well...
I wonder, you know, where are we getting the money? Where's this money coming from?
Well, we budgeted for the, for the meters, and we budgeted...
The meters and the software. That was the meters and the software.
Software's already been paid. Software's already been paid for.
But I'm saying, that was in that resolution.
Yeah.
The resolution said the software and the meters.
Right, ten meters.
Seventeen thousand dollars. There was no number of meters, but it was-
It's a minimum amount, they call it a starter kit.
Okay.
So, the starter kit was a minimum amount of meters. We get the software, it was training and everything else that went with it, they came out, they did their cellular service surveys, they did all of that work to make sure that everybody in the village, once they had this installed, would be able to pin the cell towers. And it came back a hundred percent, and we, we continued down the road. And then Susan was our admin with this system. She went through the training. And we've been, since we, we got on the system, once we installed a minimum amount, then we registered meters, and now the meters are talking to the software, the software's talking to the-
That's all well and good. Tom, you're telling me how the system works. I'm asking where are we getting the money to pay for these things?
Out of the budget.
We've only got, we had ninety thousand dollars for meter maintenance allocated, ninety thousand, and that was what we usually used for meters. And then this seventeen thousand was for the software and, I mean, I could say whatever meters we're buying out of that ninety thousand, but I'm just curious, you know, you, they're, they're going full tilt to get these meters done. Are you gonna try to get them all done in the next year or something?
No, 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 no.
No, that won't happen. It would be great, because you know what? Instant gratification. If we could get all these meters done within two years, even less than if you had a contractor doing it, but they'll even tell you it's a very, very hard job to do, because most people just aren't home or whatever the situation is.
It is, but-
But you, if you remember back in two thousand sixteen when we had that presentation from Badger and the engineers, they also said, based upon, because we're losing thirty percent of our water between what's coming out of the wells and what-
I understand that, but we can't tell-
But if you look at that gap, that, if you, give, give the village of Ocean a call, give Miltown a call.
I understand. I under, I said it was a good idea then, it's a good idea now, but we have to have the money to do it. We're down, we're so far in the hole, and you really can't, don't stop telling people, it's not gonna cost you anything.
Well-
It's not gonna cost-
Of course, it's our tax dollars.
Yeah.
I, I own, I own the screw in it, and you own the head on it. We all, we all, our, everything that we collect-
People, people, residents, you know, you know as well as I do, residents don't understand that. When you tell them it's not gonna cost you anything, they think it's free.
Okay, I mean, we can just own-
Paul, if you called and asked if we're charging you for that, we would tell you no.
No, I understand.
It's coming out of tax money.
It's still coming out of tax money, we're still-
It's coming out of your tax.
We're paying for it somewhere along the way.
Of course. Yeah.
It's the way, it's the way the system works.
Yeah.
I mean, we've searched, we went down certain avenues of grants that they've been non-productive. And, you know, we're continuing. And, and again, we decided, you know, months ago, we bought the system, that it was gonna be a slow, ten meters a week, fifteen meters a week. We're putting two guys on it during the winter months, we'll put two crews on it. And we're, we're trying to hit the big bangers, where we know that there's meters that are not functioning correctly.
So, among this, among this, my final question on that same thing, the meter billing, sewer water, sewer billing, have we, have you borrowed any money from the water fund this year, this fiscal year?
No. We borrowed any money from water? To pay what, you mean the transfer to a different fund?
Sewer, yeah.
No.
No.
No?
No. Nope.
All right.
Anyone else?
One more, real quick, Tom.
Yeah.
The, the warrant's on, is this a building water fund resolution?
Yes.
An extension.
Yeah, it's the extension.
Are you sold certain land that we have?
Yeah, yeah, we're just extending the term of when we're in now. Because we're getting to the, getting to the end, but there's just a lot, we definitely have to do public hearings and everything else. Finish it. All right? All right, so, there's no other questions at the moment. So, on the internship program, we had a guy working with us from the high school during the summer months. He goes to Bosse's, and they have an internship program. So, really, we're gonna bring him aboard, and he'll be working two days a week and four hours a day for the, I think it's Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's an internship program, we'll learn more operations in DPW, and he's taking heavy equipment operator-type classes, so that's his goal in life. And he was a great, great help during the summer. And so, we're gonna bring him aboard for, for the year, as, as many months as we can. Let's see, update on the water well, water levels, they're twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seven, I'll say six inches, twenty-seven feet, six inches. So, that's been pretty static over the last, probably since our last meeting. I think we were at twenty-seven feet again. So, that's a good thing, it's holding.
Twenty-six, hold it.
And then obviously, the next thing is the implementation of the volunteer water restrictions, asking everybody, obviously, outside stuff has been pretty much clear-tail. Inside stuff, you know, do full, full loads of dishwasher, clothes, maybe a little bit of a shorter shower, whatever you can do voluntary-wise to, to help out. If the levels continue or get to a point where we need to do a, a mandatory, then we'll obviously be in touch and letting everybody know where we are with that. And, yeah, we might get an inch between Thursday or Wednesday and Friday, whatever it is, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, but that's gonna, that's gonna take two to three weeks to get to the aqua filter. That's not gonna hold all of it.
You know, it, David, it is pretty quick. I, I can't, can't explain it, but the day when you were here and we were talking about the wells, and they went down to, I think, like, almost twenty-eight feet, where they were low like twenty-seven, eight, it went up to twenty-seven, four. Can't explain it. But it, we've been, knock on wood, we've been hovering around that number.
I've never seen that stream that long.
Yeah.
And that stream regularly some way more than you guys in the world.
Well, and I can say too, that you see today, they just did a current drought condition, they just elevated to a warning. So, that's the second level out of four levels. And, you know, everything that I just kinda mentioned is in this informational sheet that they sent out, and we're gonna be posting it on, online, if it hasn't been done already. Also, ABC has issued a statewide burn ban until November thirtieth. So, that means anything outside, no, no can do, be it fire pits, anything. And the fire departments have been called out crazy amount of times for outside burning. Just can't say it enough, you don't, you don't, you just don't know, because over the weekend, Saturday, I'm down at the VFW post for a party, and ashes from Greenwood Lake were landing in the parking lot. So, it's amazing what the air circulation's doing, the environment does, but please be really careful with that stuff. Let's see. Next to-
Excuse me, so we're not selling any more water as of now?
No.
We are. You said we are?
No.
No?
No, no.
As of when?
All commercial, all commercial stuff has been suspended.
As of when?
As of today. He's been notified, I notified him over the weekend.
Oh, because he was there at like two oh eight this afternoon.
Yeah. Probably trying to get his last truck. But, yeah, he's done. And so, the other thing we've been, we discussed probably last year at some point was a telephone system in this building, which is beyond, beyond its reasonable lifetime. There's no parts, you can't get parts, anything for these systems. So, we began looking at different voice-over IP systems, which are the, really the latest and greatest in technology for phone system. Gernon's taken the lead on that. We probably have seen four, maybe five. We have another one set up for next week, and we'll be, make a decision on that. The good news is, the price is that we're kinda currently paying on the system we have. And all the other systems are coming back at a very reasonable monthly fee. So, we'll present more of that as it becomes available. Just that also, the veteran banners that we've put up this year, we will, we will be taking them down when we do the transition between American flags and all the Christmas decorations.
Holidays.
Sorry?
Holidays, decorations.
Oh, holiday. Christmas, Merry Christmas. We do, we do the Happy Hanukkahs, and we do it also. Kwanzaa, we do Kwanzaa too. Let's see, lighting at the pickleball courts, we're gonna adjust the times from ten o'clock to nine o'clock. And obviously, the weather will be getting colder at some particular point in time, and then we'll be removing the nets to protect them from, you know, winter and all that good stuff, so. And then as far as the, the other three new courts that are going in, you know, due to weather and everything else, we're gonna wait till the spring to apply the acrylics and finish all those, those other courts. The other thing, let's see, New York State Conference of Mayors, twenty-twenty-five legislation, session agendas. Every municipality was sent a survey, asking them with, you know, kind of priorities. So, they broke it down between finance, government operations, energy, environment, technology, employee relations, and public safety. So, everybody had a chance to vote on these things, they came up with their categories, and we'll post this online as well. There's like four or five lines, but just for example, on the finance, maintain and increase state aid to the cities and villages, which we've talked about before, provide dedicated funding for local water and sewer infrastructure, increasing highway funding, and remove tax, tax disincentives for economic growth. So, that's kinda the thing that we're putting together as the New York Conference of Mayors. And all that goes, Nikon represents us, and we present it up to the state of New York. Update on the EJ McLaughlin Square paving project has been completed. The line paintings have also been done, and the area is in process of being decorated for the holidays. And the lot came out really good, as we did last, we were last meeting. We, big thank you to the town Blooming Grove, Wayne, and the gentleman from the town of Montgomery for all of their work and machines. Update on the Whoville, which will be on December- Sorry?
Can I just ask you a question on that? Did we pay Montgomery?
No.
We didn't pay Montgomery?
We didn't pay anybody.
You didn't pay anybody?
No, just for the asshole.
Good.
Yeah, it was great. The guys are really good, and, you know, we plan on, you know, doing more stuff like that, because the town has a machine, similar to that, a paving machine, but it's not as robust and, and more technology on this one. And because it's a small lot, it just, it just takes a lot more time, and they, and they did a great job, so. Very thankful for their, for their help. Let's see, Whoville. So, Whoville is Saturday the seventh. There'll be, you know, entertainment and things at EJ Square, at the lot for the VFW memorial area, there'll be vendors over there and food trucks, not, I only think a couple, because we're relying on our local businesses to supply most of the food, or if not all of the food. And that'll run to approximately five o'clock. Then Blooming Grove, the Chamber of Commerce will take over the entertainment for the next hour, and then six o'clock, the parade will start. And it'll end, you know, I think it, depending on how many fire trucks and other people are in the parade at that point. Update on the water sewer billing, meter exchange, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add?
Report that we have ten ion water users who have set up for themselves alerts when they wanna know that they're overrunning. We did, we were able to notify two different residences that they had leaks in their houses, because it does have a leak detection. And currently, we're working on getting approximately six meters a week installed.
Good, thank you. Who's in the back?
Holly.
Hi, Holly.
Hi. Um, so, that's me, we are doing a fundraiser for my mom's church over the first press hearing the same day, December seventh, and I'm having a few food trucks, all the vendors, fees are going right directly to the church. So, I'm only having three of them, and maybe some other small vendors, everybody's interested, maybe on their ass, but I had, let Sue, Sue had asked me to bring a layout or something, but it's gonna be pretty much just blocked off the parking lot.
And if it's private, it's on your own lot?
Yeah, nothing's gonna be blocked, so, and it's gonna be small.
What time?
Um, trucks, they're doing, the Washingtonville Events is doing a breakfast from
Right.
nine AM to eleven, Breakfast with the Bridge at the church.
Right.
So, the parking lot will be closed off at eleven.
Okay, if you have a flyer or something, we'd be happy to post it.
Yeah, I'm putting it.
Okay.
Say, Holly, if you could drop off, this is when we finish this meeting, drop off what you have for us, so I can run it up the rest of the bowl here?
Yeah, just like a little sketch, but it's really not much.
That'd be great, though, if you'd like to send it.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna try to have the ladies at the church sell some other stuff, because the church is struggling financially, so it's just a good idea.
Good idea.
I have other questions about the, like, waiting for next meeting, about the parking there, and the, like, high school students use the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe somehow, working with the school, the church is not saying that they don't want them to park there, but maybe somehow that can benefit the church in a way financially, and put ideas together and have some kind of assistance, you know?
Can you get a contact at that, at the schools?
It was just, it was all the White House, or?
Yeah, I would probably start with Paul Instat. I can give his home number, yeah. Instat? Don't ask me further pronunciations. I'll get lost in the sauce.
I'm Holly Joy, if anybody didn't know, I'm the resident of the village and owner of the church.
Thanks, Holly.
But that, uh, the first press hearing started walking on.
Just a couple of follow-ups from Michael. The signs, we investigate, police are up there checking it out, chief, and we're, we ordered the signs. So, as soon as we get them, we'll put them up. All right? Another, Diane, I think, was asking about, there was some Halloween decoration thing still hanging on the dog fence, all that's been taken care of and removed. Hunter hydrants, we have to be repaired. One was repaired, we have four. So, one was, one was fixed, there's one at the corner of Somerset and Avron Boulevard that needs to be replaced, so we're just waiting for the eight-one-one dig notice and have them come out and do their checking for gas lines and everything else, and then we'll be replacing that hydrant there. Sean, we talked about the water spigots, but we'll check out the same situation at Brookshire. And we'll be, we're gonna be replacing the water meters at Weather Bank. So, we'll be in the basements and looking at the piping for those spigots and see if they're going from the, from the meter. Or, and you, Chris told me that there's a second meter, they have two meters, one for the outside and one for the home.
That's for Weather Bank?
For Weather Bank, yeah.
Yeah, Brookshire didn't have any.
Yeah, so, we'll see, or like you said, check in with HOA, see what the stories are.
They're gonna be able to, this week, change some of those meters.
Yeah. Uh, next one was the wastewater treatment plant, we've covered that. And that will bring us right into the resolutions. So, resolution twenty-four zero-one-nine-five to approve the architecture review board, Washingtonville Dunkin' Donut, or Washingtonville, yes, Dunkin' Donuts LLC, DVA Dunkin' Donut sign-up location. Everybody had received that, they had made some applications. And is there any questions or comments on that before we do the resolution? Yeah, we'll sign with that. Well, she needs to look at the sign from a size perspective, not so much the color, and she didn't. Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
To accept? Second is turning. Any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Resolution twenty-four zero-one-nine-six to approve a resolution in support of the continued increase in New York State aid for the local governments. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Resolution twenty-four zero-one-nine-seven to reschedule a public hearing to be held on Monday, December second, twenty-twenty-four, at seven PM, or as soon thereafter, as it can be heard to consider the adoption of local law establishing a moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of certain land development applications in the village of Washingtonville for six months from the expiration of the current moratorium. Have a motion, please?[1793.12]
Motion.
Someone's on a motion, second?
Second.
Second, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Um we've covered this, but this is the Resolution twenty-four zero one nine eight. Due to severe lack of rain and fall in our area, the village is implementing voluntary water restrictions and are requesting residents to reduce and conserve water usage inside and outside. Until further notice, commercial water pooling is suspended. Do we have a motion, please? Steve, second? Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Let's see, Resolution twenty-four zero one ninety-nine to approve the Architecture Review Board Printing Express Inc. sign application. Again, everyone has received a copy of that. If there's no questions at this time, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second is Steve. Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. This resolution is on hold, tabled. Next Resolution twenty-four zero two zero one to approve Resolution authorizing Mayor Benko to execute settlement with former village employee.
Is there an attachment we're supposed to see?
I'm sorry?
Says seated attachment?
Yeah, that's what I have and that's what I need to read.
Oh, okay.
So the Resolution uh meaning of the Village Board, Village of Washingtonville was conveyed or convened on November, oh. Should be eighteen, eighteen twenty twenty-four at seven PM. The final resolution was duly offered in second writ. Resolution authorizing mayor to execute settlement with former village employee, whereas the village of Washingtonville village filed certain medical and disciplinary charges against employee known to the village, the employee. And whereas the village and the employee wish to settle all claims that each may have against each other. And whereas the village and the employee have reached a settlement agreement, the settlement end, whereas the village board desires to approve the settlement and authorize the village mayor to execute the settlement as set forth therein. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, whereas clause are incorporated herein by reference section two, the village board hereby approves the settlement and authorizes the mayor to execute the settlement in form of acceptable to the village legal counsel. Section three, the village board authorized payment pursuant uh of thirty-five thousand dollars pursuant to the terms of the settlement. Section four, village mayor and any village official, employee or consultant as directed by the village mayor is authorized to take any and all necessary actions to carry out the provision of this resolution. And section five, the resolution shall take effect immediately. Okay, so with that, the resolution to accept. Do we have a motion to accept? Um, second?
Second.
Susan. Any comments, questions? Uh trustee Coleman?
No.
Trustees pressure?
Yes.
Trustee Wolski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Jack Russo?
Yes.
Mayor me, yes. Okay. Motion passes four one. Thank you, yes. All right. Next is the Resolution twenty-four zero two zero two to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to affect the necessary transfers of fund and paid village warrants. We have a motion, Steve. Second Vernon. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Coming out of the general fund, it'll be a total of one hundred ninety thousand dollars, nineteen hundred ninety thousand dollars and seventy-five cents. Out of the recreation fund, thirty-four thousand dollars. Total water fund amount would be ten thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. And the sewer fund is twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents. So. So we're back to public comment, if anybody?
On our last, on our last resolution, can you tell us where that money is, what that money is paid for? The, you know, the uh budget transfers? You're taking it out of water, you you tell me where you're taking it out of?
Well, I'm just giving you the totals by fund, what what the total expenditures were.
Okay.
So that's something new um when we were going, when we had the New York State order this year and they were doing, you know, the twenty twenty-one stuff. Um she brought up a couple of things, suggestions and and whatnot, so uh she suggested to put that in in the minutes, so that's what we're doing.
Well, you're taking it out to to pay one, pay village warrants?
Correct.
You're taking, can you can you be more specific on what specific village warrants?
All warrants and expenditures for that month.
What's being paid?
Well, I mean, because last month, last meeting, we took money out of water and 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 of of these other, the same fund.
So just for an example, out of the water fund, you have H two O innovations, those are the operators and and guys that maintain the system. Slack chemicals, you know, chlorine and chemicals that maintain this water. And three frontier communication bills. Um under the sewer, again, H two O innovations, operations and maintenance fee. Uh US Blue Book. A slack chemicals, again, for the sewer side of the house and then four frontier communication bills.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So again, for the public comment?
Yeah.
For the good of the order.
I'm sorry?
For the good of the order, you guys missed a tremendous grand opening at Great Brothers.
Yeah, you know, that's.
You meant it was a, it was a lot of food?
We didn't know, I didn't know.
Oh, come on, November ninth, it was.
I went over later that day.
It was posted on on social media and you guys did the sign and everything and uh and then.
They got no notification of a grand opening.
During the.
They 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 announced that uh I I only went down because it said the mayor was gonna have a special announcement. That's the only reason I went. I didn't go for the food.
Would've been great if I knew that.
I didn't go for the food.
Except I was up at the.
And then we also went around the corner, the lady around the corner was kind of a grand opening for her too. The massage place, like Body Works, whatever.
Yeah.
If you missed, all five of you missed a great event.
Well, you know, just as an FYI too, are you gonna, you gonna talk about Prismatic?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh Eddie Johnson, um so I guess I better help spread the word um that we had our first opening day this weekend and uh if it gets approved for the actual chamber with opening with the ribbon cutting and everything, we're hoping to do that on the thirtieth.
We're working towards.
Prismatic and the old chain bank.
Oh, one more point.
Yeah.
Place looks great.
Yeah, you were in there?
I driving by, I was able to see at night and everything in there was really cool.
It's beautiful, yeah.
Is there, is there a parmit upstairs? Did they rent?
No.
No?
No, upstairs we're uh
At the bank?
We're doing a little bit of the design work.
It's not open to the public.
We're gonna try and have, yes, but upstairs is not open to the public and it's gonna be phase two. Um because we have to get the um elevator prepared for that and uh I I told Dan maybe to speak with you since you have a connection.
We've been speaking with you.
And uh we were gonna try for the coming, this coming Saturday, but not trying to to spread the word. So it's better to do it, I think, the Halloween weekend and not everyone's going away and we're just trying to work. One, thank you.
It was the thirtieth as a map, right?
Small.
The thirtieth as a map?
Yes.
It's happening.
Has to be confirmed by the Chamber of Commerce, who's meeting about it tomorrow.
He just sent me emails.
Holly?
Holly, I just wanted to say also for the fundraiser at the church, like I reached out over to Amara's to see if they wanted to set up something small. Same thing with Guilty Pleasures, if they wanted a small vendor table. But if there's any local businesses that want to communicate or change maybe just for like a small fee or even just promote a business table or something.
Okay.
Okay?
Michael?
Michael's on three block street. Hey, Tom, I know the village is up like uh have the money just to burn. Um but I was thinking, I I've I've seen some village halls and other locations where they have electronic signs. Now, I know we have a lot of different ways to communicate to the public, but like if it's just something, maybe the public might have an opinion on this, but to have an electronic sign to say, you know, village meeting next Monday, the eighteenth, the under eighteenth or something. Or water restrictions in effect or burn ban in effect.
Send out private sign.
I'll give you, I'll give you two ropes.
Maybe I volunteer to walk the town like that?
You gotta be honest and we pick up.
Mike, actually, we've been talking about that with the com committee. Mike, we've been talking about that with the com committee.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and the planner.
Hello?
We talked about possibly, and then the location where, but electronic. Um but there there were actually um images that I sent over to her and different types of um like out on the lawn, some of them where you actually go in and read the letters, so it's more rather than it being electronic, but yeah, I thought the hall would be a good spot, you know, because you do it downtown, you don't want people stopping to read information, you know, as you're driving through, like anybody could get in their car and come past the hall, they know that meetings are being posted, but.
Yeah. Tell me something about that too. Yeah.
Sean Hagerty, I got three things. One is, is there any update on the skateboard park?
I've reached out to three companies, only one of them actually has provided a estimate. The other two have left me in the wind. Part of that is also g society, how much of that space we wanna use for skateboard and do we want to you know, we serve some of the other space for other, you know, outdoor activities, so it's fine line.
All right.
So I can't reach.
You wouldn't wanna take all the space like the sick pickleball court's in that area. I, you need some other things you want to. But so I, that's understandable. The other one is uh I think there's fly tipping or somebody did some fly tipping on Tolman Road between Canterbury Circle and Decker. Right where the guardrail starts, there's plywood there, two-by-fours, looks like old fence and some other stuff. They may have thrown leaves and trees on the outfit, because a bunch of rubble in there. And the last thing is, I see the pickleball court, the fence was put on the inside. Did we pay for that to be changed to the inside in the original pickleball court or was that under warranty?
No, we, it wouldn't have a warranty.
Why wouldn't we have a warranty? We have it on.
A warranty would be part. Warranty would be the fence itself, the fence itself apart.
Well, be labor for being put in, not being put in properly.
Well, we never instructed to it to be put on the inside.
That should be not you. That should be somebody who's who knows what they're doing.
Right.
Do it right. Even when the clips that are on there now, they only pigtail one side and hook the other side. They should pigtail both sides of the whole, the thing holding.
Yeah, we'll look at it, because the the company that did the second fence did the reverse, they changed the fence. We'll take a look at those. So you're just saying that the metal.
Well, the pigtail, the the straps that go around there, pigtail one.
Okay.
It's done by machine and they just hook the other side.
Yeah.
It needs to be pigtailed. There's a lot of stress on that.
Yeah, okay, I'll take a look.
Uh one other thing, if if you all haven't heard uh this afternoon, uh I believe it was this afternoon, New York canceled the work of the aqueduct for this year. How more water come downstream?
They canceled it?
Why?
It was just because of the water shortage. They didn't want to reduce the flow of water from the upstate aqueducts to their croton aqueduct system. So they put a temporary halt on the repair work until the drought is over.
Got you.
Have I been to the Congress?
Yes.
Me and I from our court, to think about what my question would be, treasure. We're really out with the police contract. I I know last few meetings, we're still with the Warriors. Are we out of impasse? Are we going arbitration?
No, actually, we're doing very well.
How well are we going? It's the end of the year. We're coming through the end of the year. They're saying it's going well, but you know, we're wrong. How well is it?
Benny, we we met with the the chief, uh the police, with the chief um many times and now we passed it off.
So the chief, that's the union, huh?
I'm sorry?
It's the union that's having a really hard chief, right?
Well, no, he he attends the meetings, right? So he attends the meetings with Steve and I and and the PBA uh president and vice president. So we had made a bunch of meetings, made really good progress on the non-technical stuff. And then we passed that technical two oh sevens and some of the other attorney language type stuff and we gave that off to them. Um and they, you know, attorneys, with all due respect, slow as can be.
They use it all.
And so at the end of the day, we do have a conference call uh fif- uh December, what? So we have, we have a, we have a conference call with all the attorneys and um first week in December, I think it's the fourth. So we did make good progress. It's actually their union rep that's really slowing things down.
Also, you blame the union rep, the PBA union?
It is, he knows it is.
Maybe he's not getting what he wants. Are we, that's my question, are we out of impasse?
No, we're not in impasse.
Not communicating as best as we'd like to. Okay.
We met with the actual people from the police department that are the reps for the PBA. We're all in agreement pretty much on what we are looking at. Now it's just down to some of the legal language. Not dollars and cents or any of that, we worked all that out.
Dollars, cents, health insurance, all that, we're all.
Everything there.
And you started, you're saying the union is in agreement, whatever.
Yeah, the guys are, yeah, and now now that you're working on some uh some language.
Okay, um my usual question, trustee Wolski. Uh where are we at with irrigation measures?
We've made progress.
Sounds good.
They.
We're getting there?
Yes, they have sent it back to us for some more opinion and revision. And to be honest, right now we're working on zoning, so I have to put that aside to get the zoning taken care of. But progress has been made.
Okay. Um last question. Walking today, the benches along here, the ones by the pond.
The wild one.
Majority of them are like memorial benches. You know, I guess the public purchased that bench?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Well, we, the people
I'm not playing yet.
Purchased three of them, not all of them, so.
Excuse me?
Two new ones that were just installed.
I'm not playing about that yet. I'm I'm playing about the one by the lake.
By yours, by yours.
Right?
The three.
So now now, thank you for bringing that up. So we purchased those two benches, correct?
The other two, correct.
Yeah, we just, the wild one preserved.
Correct.
At a require, at a request of one resident, you stayed in a line, right? So one resident requested the bench. How much money are we in for the bench between concrete pads and the benches itself and the labor?
One resident maybe put their request in, but mentioned that people walk there every day, ride their bikes.
People walk everywhere.
There's wildlife back there and it's a nice place to sleep.
Repeating what you stated online, one resident requested the bench. Whether that one resident said that a million people walk by the bench. I walk by every block in the village of Washington. I'll start requesting a bench on every corner so I can take a break. And maybe I'll start requesting a porta potty so I don't have to come in and use the bathroom sometimes.
Well, also on that post, somebody else just requested um a bird feeder, since there's so much wildlife out there. The benches are.
My original question, what do, what fund did that money come out, number one? How much are we in for those two pads? Because we put seven pads down, those those memorial benches. Some of those things are like marble, that one.
One.
Okay, that that should be on some of that bad.
We had this conversation not too many weeks ago.
Yeah, one day or one week.
There's one that's on concrete, two that are not, and we're proposing to put them on concrete.
Okay, and how much are we in for those two benches? Because she requested the bench, we gave her two benches.
They're not just, sorry.
Sorry. I'll get you the figure, Benny.
So labor.
Labor is odd, so there was no charge for labor.
No, there was, you're taking them off of the front, we have a lot, listen, we have a list of things we gotta do in this village. And you guys said that numerous times.
Yeah, so we checked one of the other things.
But those two benches obviously took priority. So, I, I wanna know, how much are we in labor, manpower, what those two guy, what those guys?
You wanna know everything else that they do then?
No, I wanna know, I wanna know those two benches.
Fifty meters and doing all that?
No, I wanna know those two benches, because obviously.
Well, the resident requested a street, you know.
Obviously, the, the list is not that big and.
Residents made requests.
No, the list is huge.
One resident made a request.
One resident made a request for a street sign, I mean, is that not a?
I'm talking about the bench, one resident made a request.
I'm gonna put a question to that.
All right, this bench is all long in here.
Not on that side, there's none on that side.
Listen, Vinnie, somebody asked, we had people request.
We don't have the money, or.
They came out of the recreation, they came out of the beautification fund, as we discussed. That's where the money came from, and I'll get you the cost of the concrete.
So, one, so one resident makes one request for a bench, and we put two benches. Well.
One resident brought it to the attention, so if there's a street full of people that have a, a concern with, and wanna sign on that street, one resident comes on behalf of the street. Are you gonna say one resident, I mean, this is for the residents. This isn't one person, it's for the entire community.
You made a statement online that one resident requested.
A resident requested it on behalf of.
That's not what you said.
Well, I didn't know, you know what, then I won't say anything on Facebook anymore, I mean, come on.
We don't have any money, that's, that's the issue.
Hi, um, quick question, I was actually gonna comment and say, thank you, the benches are very nice, um, being that we live in a community where a lot of people are staying healthy and walking, and a lot of people walk on these streets, I was actually walking the other night, when we had the super moon. And then I made a Facebook comment about, thank you, wow, these were nice benches there.
Oh, that was you?
A lot, it was me on Shakers, really, yeah. I just commented because, like, thank you, Washingtonville, I said, 'cause I was like, oh, look, 'cause all of a sudden there was random benches there, very nice.
Were you the one that requested the bird feeder?
What's that, I didn't have nothing to do with the bird feeder. I just said, thank you, I don't know what, I don't think it's that the same.
Well, you're welcome.
Um, thank you, but the other benches that you're talking about, the marble benches, those are like, it looks like a dedication to.
That was part of memory of somebody, yes, but that was year, many years ago.
Yeah.
But they do need to come to the village board, and the board does need to approve that.
Oh, but like the marble benches you're talking about?
Any of them.
Yeah.
If it's on public, if it's on village property.
Is, sir, what were you saying about the concrete benches? Like the village with the men, right?
No, those weren't. They look like concrete, they're not, they're actually poly, um, it's actually.
You got plastic?
And they're, they last forever, there's no maintenance on them.
Yeah, they're very nice.
They're affordable.
Can I just ask a question? What is it that you don't like about benches?
I know, it's that I don't like benches.
Your bench bothering you, I'm curious, now I'm still curious.
It's the cost, it's about the cost.
I know, but like, it's part of the community, like, it's just, it's nice, it's nice to have that when you walk.
It's nice to have a lot of things, but about the cost, it's about, it's nice to have a lot of things, but it's about the cost, they're one, we're in a deficit, and we're paying bonds and bands and interest.
Yes, that would be everything growing, and it's nice, so it's always about the.
Can I, can I end on a happy note, John?
Sean, would I get a question first? I, I would like to request that they clean the rocks out, out spill, outweigh, down by Burn Allen, so the water can come out of, flow, come out of the ponds. Everything else is dry except for that, 'cause it's clogged. So, I'm only one person making a request, hopefully you listen to it this time, and it's about the fence request.
Oh, we've done it three times already, so the kids, they're kid, what are you gonna do?
Let me ask you a question, why are those rocks on top of that? To stop it from heaving in the winter? That's ridiculous, it's not gonna stop anything.
Not from heaving.
What is it for?
The, why were they, were?
They weren't there for years, they were put there.
That drainage had been there as long as anybody could remember.
The rocks were not there all the time. They were just put there maybe a year, half two years ago, you don't need the rocks there.
To slow down probably the running water, okay? Because it was probably digging a hole on the other side of the pipe where the water would just constantly run. So, they put riprap in there.
The pipes, the rocks were not in the stream, they were up on top. And children have thrown them in, maybe the adults are too, good splashes are full of fun. So, what they need to do is take all the rocks out of there, so it doesn't keep on happening. That stream is low to water, and it should be bone dry like the rest of the streams around here. Look, they walk around, go through the woods, everything's bone dry. That is holding water, and it's stagnant. It shouldn't be, the pond's not, there's nothing coming over spillways, they're two, three feet below the spillway. Shouldn't have any water, it can't leave because it's clogged.
You still got spring feeding that pond for your free day.
Yeah, I mean, there's a spring on the other side, in the back by the door port, which is not dry.
By your house, or by you? That's almost bone dry too.
Side of the street, yes.
That's bone dry.
So.
There's no water going into that pipe.
We'll take a look at it, Sean, I mean.
It's, there's no reason for those rocks to be there.
Well, somebody, somebody put them there.
No, it's blocking the outflow.
Yeah, let's get the control of your post.
Wait, she had her end up.
Yeah, you're speaking of the, in Burn Allen Park?
Yes.
Talking about the works, I, I actually just was there this morning, and I didn't notice any, uh, it's the first time I felt like I ever stepped over it, where it was.
Yeah, it's, it's the little bridge as you go to the playground.
But like the long slid, you know, you're speaking of?
If, if you come down the path from the parking lot, like getting, going to the restrooms or the playground, you're going all that little bridge, the pipe that runs underneath that. Sean is talking about where the outlet is, that there's rocks, riprap rocks like this that are at the base of it.
Right by the bridge there?
Yes.
The whole, the whole outflow is keeping it though.
It's split in the middle, it's dry, I thought you were talking about this.
Yeah, I'll have to look.
Yeah, and just walked over, I felt like for the first time ever.
A little light note, I'll, I'll just end it with this, I, I was on a wildlife bench, I sent you a picture, Tom, you can look at it on your phone right now. I was on a wildlife bench.
I know, where'd you go?
With my binoculars, and I saw a bird.
A fire bench?
Yeah, I was from, but, and then when I realized, I looked again, it was actually somebody giving me the bird from somewhere on the pilgrim porch.
What'd you do?
They, I guess they thought I was looking in their house.
You wanna volunteer to build a birdhouse?
We have kids.
Yeah, you're it.
That's me.
You want rats somewhere, it'd be a rat thing.
Little creepy there, I don't know.
Hey, she told me to look, to go look at wildlife, I was expecting to see Donna come out of the bushes.
A bat house?
Okay.
Very good.
Well, that's good, they have another happy note.
All right. Uh, without any further ado, I would like to just go to executive session personnel. Um, have a motion, please.
Motion.
Have a second, just have a one favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate you coming.
Have a good night.